Good evening, everyone. My name is Clark Beck. I am a member of Communities United for Action and the current president of the board. I'd like to welcome you to the Communities United for Action candidate forum for the Hamilton County Commission election. We'd like to begin by saying thank you to the candidates for coming to this community discussion. We'd like to thank also our COFA members who worked hard to put this event together. More importantly, thank you to our audience for engaging in our candidate forum. As mentioned earlier, we're streaming live on Facebook and we've got quite a few people here in our meeting. As you know, Communities United for Action unites Hamilton County residents across neighborhood, class, and race to work to improve our entire community. We are currently working to make our utilities affordable, to ensure that we have enough affordable housing, and to get our sewers fixed. So, we're going to get started with our candidate forum very soon. But first, we have a special door prize, two tickets to the Cincinnati Museum Center. We've put this, uh, we've put names of everyone who are RSVP tonight in a, in a container. And Claire Metzmeier is going to pull out a name for us. And when you get that name, let us know.
Okay, I got Connie Hollins.
Connie Hollins.
Connie Hollins is here.
She is.
Hello, congratulations. You are our winner this evening. Please call the office tomorrow to claim your prize. So again, thank you all for being here this evening. And now I'm going to turn our meeting over to our COFA board member and tonight's moderator, Willie Hopkins.
Good evening, everyone. Now for some ground rules for the candidate participants and the audience. Now, I know how you politicians love to talk, but tonight we will allow each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves and two minutes to address each of COFA's three prepared questions. We have a timekeeper, Miss Wanda Ball, who will help us and the candidates stay on time. During the prepared questions, we will mute the audience to minimize background noises. After the prepared questions, the audience will have the opportunity to ask questions during the open forum. So please hold on to your questions until then. Communities United for Action invited all candidates for the two seats in the November 3rd Hamilton County Commissioner race. Mr. Harmon Najoli, Ms. Alice Alicia Reese, Mr. Matt O'Neil, Andy Black, and Denise Treehouse. We offer each the ability to send a campaign representative if they cannot attend. It's in, and this part is important. So hear me and hear me well. It's important for everyone here to understand that the views reflected in the answers of the candidates do not in any way represent the views of Communities United for Action. So now, let us get started. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves for the introduction. And each question, we will rotate the order. So at this time, will be Denise Treehouse, followed by Matt O'Neil, Harmon Najoli, and Bernadette Watson, which is Alicia's representative. So, candidate introduction. Candidate, Denise Treehouse, let's start with you. You have two minutes to introduce yourself.
I can't unmute. Oh, there we, are you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. It says I can't unmute myself. I'm going to leave that box alone. So I won't, I will try to not take all my time because I have to leave early. But thank you for having the candidates forum. I think this year is an especially important year, especially important election year, and we're close. We're getting there. But also, we've seen a lot of change this year, particularly related to COVID-19 and some of the other things that's happened at the county level. So very quickly, as you know, our trajectory is going in the wrong way for COVID-19. And so I'm going to encourage everybody to mask up when you go out, stay away from each other, and wash your hands. But the county has tried to step in and help with some federal dollars that we got. So we're providing rent assistance, small business assistance, nonprofit assistance, and other things where we think the needs are in the community, listening to what people are struggling with and trying to meet that need. If anybody, by the way, on the call is interested in getting that information, please go to the Hamilton County website. One of the other things that we've done this year that I think is critically important is declare racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. That spurred us into action for on a couple of things. Expanding our Office of Economic Inclusion to make sure everybody gets to participate in the group growth of the county. We're doing a disparity study to level set. And we're also in partnership with the sheriff, providing bystander training for the sheriff's deputies, and we hope to roll that out countywide. So some things that kind of are on the horizon for us. Also, we have started to think more about housing, and I know that's one of the topics in affordable housing and looking forward to being a partner with the city and other communities when it comes to affordable housing in Hamilton County.
Thank you, Ms. Treehouse. Next would be candidate O'Neil. Matt O'Neil, are you there?
It looks like he's connecting to the audio.
Okay, so while he's connecting, let's move on to Mr. Najoli.
He needs to unmute.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have been unmuted by the host. My name is Harmon Najoli. I live in West Price Hill. I am a father of two. I've been married for sixteen years. My wife and I are very engaged in our community. I have been soccer, basketball, and track and field coach at three different schools and taught global issues and international business at Indiana Wesleyan University. I have a doctoral degree in organizational leadership. I wrote a two thirty-two page dissertation on wisdom and citizenship behavior. I am an author. I have written a number of books, and most recent was a book on public service and leadership. I have served with numerous nonprofit organizations, one being local homeless shelter, whereby in 2015, I was named one of Cincinnati's Forty Under Forty for my work in helping homeless men get off the streets, into shelter, and into rapid rehousing. There's some typing. How do you know when I'm close to the two minutes?
We'll let you know.
Okay. And hey, I petitioned to run as an independent candidate, which has never ever been done in the history of Hamilton County. I think I am best positioned to be able to bring a tremendous sense of unification for our county and hope my passion really is to inspire young, black, brown, white boys and girls to really know that everything is possible if they want to run for office, if they want to start businesses, if they want to pursue careers in different areas, to really go for it. And my objective as a commissioner will be to make sure that I accomplish that. I do not want to be a career politician. I want to serve for one, two terms maybe, and actually teach others how to run for office. And I am very ready to be a full-time and a full-time commissioner. I want to serve day and night, twenty-four hours, to serve our county, to move forward, to be fast, and to lead.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Neil, are you ready? Matt O'Neil, your audio correct yet? If not...
I think he might not be connected. If he is not, he can, um... He could dial in by phone, and I can just unmute the phone, people. I don't know if that's how he is chosen to, but we could, um... I'll try to see if it's one of the phone people.
Okay. While you're working that out, we're going to Ms. Bernadette Watson, which is Alicia Reese's representative. Ms. Watson.
Good evening, everyone. I really appreciate you allowing me to represent Alicia, who I am always very proud of and the work that she's done. We have our training for GLTB, which everyone hopefully knows that we've been working very diligently and very hard to help get out the vote and how the voting rights have been always so important for Alicia. But I just have just a brief statement I just wanted to make from her to let you know that she is committed to working with COFA and other organizations on issues affecting the county and the entire state of Ohio that she has experienced over the years. As many of you know, Alicia's been a city council member, the vice mayor, Ohio state representative, and she's been on finance committees, which will give her a real insight, I believe, to help the county as we deal with our budget and the issues that you've mentioned that you were interested in, such as the sewers and housing and the things that affect people directly, and be able to bring that commitment that she's made with finances and her knowledge and experience to the Hamilton County Commission seat. Alicia's done infrastructure projects, as you know, the MLK corridor, and just worked with a number of people and the representatives, along with working with the current commissioner Denise Treehouse, which I truly am very honored to have had the opportunity and the pleasure to work with her and Alicia over the last twenty-plus years and the work that they have done. Alicia, first and foremost, during this COVID and the things that are going on, she has worked very diligently, probably seven days a week, to help families to bounce back and deal with COVID and has been volunteering and helping give out food to families countywide and helping to connect them to resources. And again, I think, you know, to deal with those people who are not working right now and where the resources are and jobs, as well as the infrastructure and moving the county forward and giving the real feeling and understanding of how Cincinnati is a part of the county and we are one. And to be able to work with all of our suburban communities throughout the county and the work that COFA does, and hopefully at a victory that we're looking forward to, is to be able to work with you and address the issues that face you as we talk about energy and other things throughout the time. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the opportunity. And on behalf of Alicia Reese, thank you for your continued support through issues that we've dealt with and the work that we've done with you as well. Any other issues, hopefully you'll be able to get in touch with us after the election, and we'll be able to work with you directly through the work that Alicia will do as she moves...
I'm sorry, time, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to do is just ask the phone, the people who we have that are on the phones to unmute if, if that could perhaps be one of, could be Matt O'Neil. And you may have to press star six.
Can he, is there any way he can give us a sign and let he, let him know that we are trying to get to reach him?
He could, if he is in the meeting and not connected to audio, he could put something in the chat that says, "I'm on this phone number," and that's what needs to be unmuted.
Okay, so...
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Ah, finally, I'm unmuted. I've been hearing everybody, but I, I've been muted the whole time.
Well, that's great. Now that you're on, you're up to bat.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. It's just muted tonight. When I ran, I put together three issues that are important to me and, and I believe to the whole county. One was that the relates to the tax rate, the sales tax rate specifically. The Union Terminal building was, the restoration was complete, so taxes should have gone down in April of 2020 by a quarter percent on the sales tax. In the summer of eighteen, the commissioners had planned to raise sales tax by point five, but thirty-four thousand people put together a petition drive, so the commissioners ended up not increasing the taxes. And I think that the next issue relating to cost of living in Hamilton County relates to the sewer district, which we'll cover later. And, you know, I also thought that was something of all the candidates or all the meetings I go to with candidates, that's the number one thing that people ask about. So... And then, you know, also the subsidy for Metro, which now go is funded by the point eight sales tax. That's, you know, the local portion of the sales tax. Five point seven five goes to Ohio, and a dollar and a quarter was local. And then this point eight is a sixty-four percent increase. So those are the issues that I ran on. And then, of course, coronavirus struck and the death of George Floyd two months later. So, you know, on those particular issues on coronavirus, certainly, you know, seven months in, it's still out there and still bad, but, you know, I just want to say we cannot have shutdowns. You know, people need to wear their masks, as Commissioner Treehouse earlier said. Even if you don't believe the science behind it, it's a courtesy to your fellow citizens that are serving you in stores and so on and so forth. So, you know, I think that's important. And on the death of George Floyd, I think, you know, there are certain things that can be done to reform the police. And, but this idea of protests turning into riots and burning down cities, Philadelphia being the latest this week, having parts of your city born does not help anybody and, you know, is not the solution that'll be the reforms that will make our communities safer for, for all people. So those are the issues that I ran on and so I'll be ready for the other questions when that does come up.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're getting ready to move on to the COFA prepared questions. Our time, our timekeeper will let you know thirty seconds when you have thirty seconds left, so you can wrap it up. Now, we will ask the representative of COFA's committees to ask questions to the candidates. For the first question, the candidates will answer in this order. Mr. O'Neil, you're up first, followed by Mr. Najoli. Sue? Russ Dawes. Are you there, Russ? Is Russ unmuted?
You have the floor, sir. Are you ready?
Yes.
I am Russell Doyle, representing COFA's Housing Action Team. So this question is dealing with housing. We know that Hamilton County needs forty thousand additional units of affordable housing. How will you bring livable, affordable housing to Hamilton, Hamilton County residents?
Okay, the first thing I'd like to say is one of, one of the things that I did a little research on, the relationship of the average community income compared to the average house value in Hamilton County. It's about three to one roughly. And, you know, I compared that to the city of Los Angeles, which the, the average income is seventy-two thousand, and the average house is about six-twenty. So, you know, eight and a half to nine ratio. So they would be happy if the ratio in their community was, was three to one. So when it gets to be as high as theirs, you wind up with a lot of doubling up, and, and part of the problem is, you know, restrictive zoning, which, you know, putting height limitations on a dense city leads to sprawl, you know, compared to, say, Chicago and New York, which are more densely populated. So I think that the factor is that if you have a lot of good jobs come into your community and it jacks up the price of housing, then that can be a situation that makes housing affordable. Or if a lot of jobs go away, sure, the price of houses may go down, but if nobody has a job, then any price of a house is out of reach to them. So I think you have to have the right balance of, of good jobs, but not jobs that, you know, force people to pay way more than they can afford relative to the average of the community. So then I think other issues that are important, foreclosure relief. Somebody's worked for, you know, twenty, thirty years and lived in a particular home, and all of a sudden they, they lose their job due to Corona or whatever, to where all of a sudden, you know, they're down in the foreclosure court four months later. You know, I would love for the county to have some sort of foreclosure relief fund for people that have been, you know, good solid taxpayers and worked on their homes and kept them up, and all of a sudden something bad happens to them. And then they lose all their equity in the house, you know, when you go to the foreclosure court, sixty percent is what you'll get on a house on the assessed market value typically. I think that another issue is houses that are unoccupied. So there needs to be some sort of vacancy tax on, on my street that I live on. You know, it's a, it's a good solid middle-class street, but there's two homes that have been unoccupied for ten years. Nobody really knows why these people don't want to, want to hang on to a house and don't live there, but that's bad for the community. Then also, I think you have the situation if a neighborhood gentrifies, people have been there for a long time, and they get kicked out because they can't afford the underlying rise in the property tax for it, some of which can be kicked back to the abatement that other homes are getting when they tear their house down and build it back from the ground up. So I think all these things factor into affordable housing, and sometimes the county has prob, has programs that address some of these, but if people don't know about them, you know, it's no good. You need to, you know, make sure that people are aware of their options and so on and so forth. So I think that all these factors combine to make, you know, housing affordable in a community.
Thank you. Your time's up, sir.
I'm done.
Mr. Najoli, you're up.
He's muted.
Okay, thank you. Now I know to wait until I see that sign that I have been unmuted. First and foremost, I really am troubled by the number of vacant homes in our county. Many of them end up being boarded up. And when you look at the county auditor website, these are out-of-state landlords. I think one of the top things I want to do soon as I hit the ground running is to have a conversation with Mr. Dusty Rhodes to find ways in which we can really hold out-of-state landlords accountable to making sure that they fix these homes. Along with that, we have to work with organizations which are on the forefront of designing homes to ensure that they look into how we can reuse some of these multi-unit homes, you know. Some of them need to really be fixed, and there needs to be an attraction of resources which can go towards revitalizing some of those homes that have been boarded up. I will work with the port and with our community development corporations, a big one being Price Hill Will, to make sure that we are restoring homes and putting them into a condition that they can be usable. I would like to be able to, I worked at City Gospel Mission first, and I helped so many men get into what's known as rapid rehousing. We need to look into many of those programs which can help low-income individuals and moderate-income persons to be able to afford housing. I have visited a recent affordable unit right there on Isard Charles. We have the H twenty-one flats. It's a beautiful unit, and thank you to Commissioner Treehouse to what she did to ensure that that building was and is available to many of our residents. We need to continue to have many more projects like those that will really serve people across the county. And lastly, I'd say recently, there was an event at the Wildwood Junction, known as Homarama, which is a showcase of luxury homes. I would like to look into ways in which when organizations like Homarama want to bring in this showcase for luxury homes, perhaps they can commit to producing models of affordable units that can be built also within those same neighborhoods where some of these affordable, uh, luxury homes are being built. So I have a very comprehensive platform, and one of the items on my platform is affordable housing. I really want to work with the Port Authority and CDCs to make sure that we really move the ball forward to ensure that we are providing housing for these forty thousand units that are needed.
Okay, Mr. Najoli, your time's up, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Najoli. Ms. Treehouse, you're up. Ms. Treehouse, are you there?
Just taking a minute to unmute. Sorry about that. So, you know, what we've learned through LISC and other organizations that have studied the lack of affordable housing in Hamilton County is that we need about forty thousand units, which is a really high number, but we need to take an aggressive approach to start to chip away in conjunction with the city and the outlying areas to start to address this issue. So it's been an ongoing issue, but I think, given the study that just came forward, it's time to act now. And so within the last few days, actually, I've just been involved with CMH Day today. They opened some affordable housing units, and they're working, actually, on one in Price Hill. It's the, it's the Pine Crest. It's on West A Street. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that's a lot of units, and they're redoing all of those to make sure that they provide dignity to the people that are living there. There was another project that was involved with the Land Bank. I'm a member of the Land Bank Board, and so they are going into targeted neighborhoods trying to tear down very blighted properties, but restore those that can be restored and reclaim them for the community and make sure that there is housing available. It's Evanston, Price Hill, Avondale. They've moved out into the county just a little bit as well. So that's something that the county invests in. I think it's really important because it's such a strategic approach. And so as you can see, the partnerships are incredibly important because the volume of housing we need is so high. So in the last budget that we put forward, we had money in there for housing. COVID-19 unfortunately wiped it out. And so we are in the middle of our budget process right now. There is additional money in the budget for housing. And so I am hopeful that we will be able to continue to push to be a partner when it comes to providing affordable housing with, as I said, all these other organizations that are doing the same kind of work.
Thank you, Ms. Treehouse. Ms. Watson? She unmuted?
She, uh...
She had to leave.
Okay.
Yeah, she said in the chat she was, had to go do training.
Okay, thank you for your answers. For our next questions, we will go in this order. Mr. Najoli, Ms. Treehouse, and Mr. O'Neil. Ms. Irene Riley, you have the floor.
I'm Irene Riley, representing COFA's Energy Affordability Action Team. COFA sees affordability, energy as a major problem. Can you talk about your plans to make energy affordable? And can you address renewable and other energy technologies in your answers?
Mr. Najoli?
Yes, I would say that first and foremost, we need to conduct a solid analysis of the energy affordability gap within our county. We have many homes where, you know, individuals cannot afford to be able to pay on their energy bills. Personally, whenever I receive my bill, I'm looking at it very carefully, and I like it when periodically the company is able to send me an analysis based on my neighborhood. I need, we need, I think we need to have more of those reports, particularly for individuals who live in areas where they are within or below the federal poverty level, two hundred percent below federal poverty level. Such an analysis, working along with the county auditor, will enable us to be able to provide those, you know, incentives and programs that allow people to be able to take care of their energy needs. As regards renewable energy, we are a region of seven hills. And I think we truly can explore those new technologies that will enable us to be able to provide modern technologies, say, using sunlight or using wind, really being able to harness these new sources of energy that are clean and allow us to move away from a heavy reliance on dirty energy. I'm looking at, you know, oil and gas and coal, which are not good for our environment and for our planet. So really being able to conduct those studies that will enable us to find ways to enable people to utilize less of the dirty sources of energy and more of the clean sources of energy. And additionally, also perhaps working to ensure that we are meeting the guidelines, federal guidelines of the Clean Water Act and ensuring that even simple things like people being able to recycle, that will go a long way in ensuring that we have a good use of our energy sources within our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
He's muted.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the question to me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so Duke Energy has percent of income plans which do assist people with their bills, but they're very aggressive at shutting people down. And the late charges they assess, you know, although not high, that once you get behind, you have to pay a security deposit and if you've had other situations, then more security deposits. So we really have a very unfriendly energy company here running our local power supply. So I think that one thing the county can do to help is consider that how much money Duke is putting in to the fund in terms of helping underwrite those that are needy and the county can consider some sort of match of that. Because Duke has the best data on exactly, you know, how many people are struggling, how many people are late and, you know, maybe the same people are late all the time. Obviously, those people need the help. So I think another thing, renewables are certainly way more expensive than traditional coal, oil, and natural gas. So the idea of making energy affordable and then going to all renewables is a contradiction. So if you really want energy to be cheaper, one would not embrace, you know, wind and solar and so much things. I mean, it's just, not that they're not good, but it's a contradiction if you're looking for the cheapest source of energy. Coal is relatively dirty than oil less dirty and natural gas pretty clean. So if one really wants to clean the environment, as I think the people are seeing that the, you know, whether or not the coal miners like it or not, but you know, coal is kind of fading from use and natural gas is increasing. Natural gas is clean and it's cheap. And to me, it's the best connection of all three that it's good for the environment and it's cheap. So, you know, to, if you're looking at affordability, that would be the way to go.
Thank you, sir. Will you finish?
He's muted again.
Okay, Ms. Watson?
She's gone.
So?
So we really only have two candidates, it looks like. Mr. O'Neill and Dr. Najoli.
Okay, but then Ms. Baker? Sewer justice?
Yes, I'm Andrea Baker, a Kufa member representing the sewer justice team. Since 2000, sewer rates have increased 234%, according to The Inquirer, putting rates out of reach for one in four households. Hamilton County and the city of Cincinnati residents have endured these rate increases due to the federal consent decree to fix sewer overflows and backups. Yet the bulk of the work is not complete. Thousands of your constituents are still experiencing sewer backups. And as a county commissioner, what will you do to ensure that our sewers are fixed without further delay and in a way that everyone can afford?
Who's first?
Did you say Ms. Watson that had left?
Yes, sir. She's gone.
Mr. O'Neill?
Okay, thank you for the question. Of all those things when I'm campaigning that come up, it's the sewer race and it is one of the very first things I had on my original platform. So first thing I would have done if I were on commission at the time was fought a lot harder to get consent decree. It's absolutely outrageous what's going on with that and it just seems to be no end and the projects simply aren't progressing at any kind of decent pace. You've had people like South Fairmont, which has had their entire community ruined. And, you know, what was a solid middle-class neighborhood looked like a war zone for years and years. And then there's this question about the justices of those people down there. Let's say a theoretical house would be worth 50,000 or so, but the person's forced out of their home because of all the projects of building going on down there. So let's say to get equivalent house, it would cost them 100,000. Who's going to help when that person's going, would have been happy to stay where they were, but you know, they're homeless bulldozers and they'll fall of their own. So, you know, I think people like that need to help when, you know, they're forced out of their neighborhood. By the same token, if somebody's house is worth 100,000 and the chemical plant gets zoned in next door, now their house isn't worth anything. So, you know, there ought to be help for that person as well. So I think that as far as backups, a solution is what does the extent of the problem? In other words, how many homes have a backup? What's the cost to fix it? What is the funding source? And then begin to chip away and figure out if my funding source will get this all taken care of in 10 years. Then is that a reasonable time? And then the last thing is new construction. When new construction comes in and you had a nice, you know, forested hillside and then all of a sudden that becomes developed and the runoff goes down into somebody's house that's never flooded before, that's another catastrophe that that should be caused. It's caused by the new development. Some of that new development needs to go, cost needs to be added to the people whose homes are the top of the hill to help help those at the bottom of the hill who are now getting flooded out. So, I mean, those are the things that I, you know, have that, you know, are in relation to that situation. That's it.
Mr. Najoli? Is he unmuted?
Okay. Yes, I'm unmuted now. So it is troubling that these sewer rates have increased by such a high percentage over the last 20 years. And if you look at the last 20 years, it's been the same people running for public office. And I think they have a level of responsibility for the increase in these rates and they need to be held accountable. And that's why I really believe we need to reset the leadership in the county and by extension in the city too, so that we can have a fresh, new crop of leaders who can come in with new ideas and the energy to actually bring about the changes that will truly help us. I live up the street from the Lycraan project and I drive on Queen Street City and I've been seeing the progress that has taken place. I'm encouraged to really believe that we are moving forward and this will help with bringing down these sewer rates. I have a very comprehensive five-point plan that I think will be essential to really bring into county commission. And first is to stabilize operations. Obviously, we have the order by Judge Michael Bartlett to make sure that this project groundwork is complete. And that will lead to a reduction of chaos at MSD. That will enable NSD to become what I call a major success demonstration. Second would be to enhance governance. You know, I always believe that the bottleneck is always at the top. When you have a problem within an organization, it's usually because of bottleneck at the top. We have to work with organizations that will help to really bring about good leadership within MSD and fresh new ideas. For instance, the Sierra Club has done so much to help in ensuring that we have the project groundwork is being successful. Also, hard to be workforce excellence to ensure that MSD professionals are being provided the best training so that we improve our sewer system. It is 100 years old. It needs to be brought into the 21st century. Fourth, emphasize transparency. And thank you so much to Communities United for action, for everything that you have done to push for transparency, to ensure that there is good reporting and a new dashboard that is available for the public. Just tremendous congratulations to you for that wonderful work.
Dr. Najoli, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for answering our Kufa prepared questions. That concludes Kufa's prepared question and we will now take questions for the candidates from the audience. We will ask the audience members and the candidates to limit their questions and answers to one minute each. So the other, we could get more audience participation. There are a few ways you can let us know you'd like to ask the question. If you are on Zoom, raise your hand by tapping Participants in the Participant window. You will see an option under More to raise your hand. We will call on you and ask you to unmute. You can also use the Zoom chat if you prefer to write your questions. Please do so now if you have questions. If you are watching on Facebook, please put your questions in the comment section. If you are on the phone, we will give you an opportunity to unmute during the open forum. We will rotate reading questions in the chat, Facebook, hand questions on the phone, and calling on people who have raised their little blue hands on Zoom. That don't mean that your hand is blue now. It's just how it appears to us. If you wish, if you are on the phone and you wish to ask a question, press six when we unmute phones. We will try to get to as many questions as possible in our remaining time. So we again ask the audience to limit their questions and candidates limit their answers to one minute. We are now into the open forum portion of the program. Places for questions. Okay, ask questions.
Somebody? It looks like we don't have raised hands, but what I can do is just unmute people and allow you all to unmute yourself. So you should be able to unmute yourself now. If you are on the phone, you would have to press star six.
Okay, yeah, I'm unmuted, I believe. That's Mr. O'Neill.
Okay.
Okay, we have feedback.
That's me, sorry.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Over with phone or with the Facebook, Allison?
Or Zoom.
I don't see any on Facebook yet.
I have a question.
Okay, who is that?
It's Monique.
Okay, what's your question, ma'am?
It's Monique.
Monique? What's your question?
Duke Energy raised our rates to install two-way transmitting smart meters between 2009 and 2015. Recently, our rates were increased again to replace them with new smart meters. Over the years, local reporter John Maderes has produced several stories about Duke's smart meter complaints. Duke has admitted there are some smart meter fires. Last month, a Duke customer called at home with the Gary Sullivan radio show and reported she and her husband have experienced new and ongoing electrical and health issues since Duke installed a new smart meter on their home about five months ago. She'd contacted John Maderes too. Gary said he had heard about similar problems and referred her to an organization called Physicians for Safe Technology. Are you planning to do anything about these smart meters? How about any of these other unsafe technology that's being installed throughout our neighborhoods? 4G and 5G small cell towers, LED streetlights, Wi-Fi hotspots, et cetera. Thank you.
Mr. Najoli, would you like to answer that?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, first, my heart goes out to you for this unfortunate experience. I want to first inform you that just last week, there was the Jubilee Program that was announced by the mayor of Cincinnati. If you have back bills and struggling with payment of bills, you can actually apply for debt forgiveness. And thank you again to Kufa for being able to really push for that to happen within the city. Obviously, it needs to be extended countywide so that many more have access to that opportunity to provide their information and have an assessment on whether they can qualify for elimination of bills. Regarding unsafe technologies, my objective would be to harness remarkable minds, really look through our community to find individuals with the sharpest, brightest minds who many times are working for corporate organizations and are not involved in government, to ask them to find ways in which they can improve our technologies within our communities. Perhaps they could do this through pro bono work, which can enable them to receive certain incentives from organizations from the county government.
Thank you, Dr. Najoli. Is it time for Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I can speak.
Okay.
Regarding the Duke smart meter thing, the PUCO would be the primary person or organization that would deal with that. So I think my role here would be making sure I direct them to PUCO and that they get their relief through PUCO and if they are not satisfied through PUCO, then, you know, then get more advanced and make sure that Duke takes care of such situations. Like, for example, providing opt-outs, so if somebody has a situation or it interferes maybe with medical equipment they may have in their home, that, you know, we make sure that those people have waivers and they can't be forced in a situation where it's unhealthy for them. So regarding things like cell tower and tower lighting, you know, I think certain of the placement of certain of the lights is quite unfortunate for some people. Let's say, I'm thinking of a couple of places, Glenway and Work Road is a perfect example that, or Glenmore and Work, where you have a home and then all of a sudden you have all these high-powered lights from a gas station flooding into somebody's home. And, you know, or maybe that they come in and take a smaller, you know, street, maybe a 10-foot high and then they replace it with 30-foot-high towers. I mean, I think the cities that do that, they need to be called out on that. It's simply not friendly to the neighborhood. And, you know, I definitely support people and I want to have a mechanism where people can say, hey, I get noticed first. Also, you don't want a construction crew out there, you know, digging up to put a tower light in. And I think that those things come to me as county commissioner, you know, I think these people need notice. And I'd love the county to get out there and set up some trucks and block whoever's contract to do that. These are quality life issues that are very important that can ruin your community real quick.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you. Your time's up. Are there any other questions?
I have a comment, if I can make a little comment to everyone.
Yes, sir.
I want to congratulate Mr. Najoli and myself somewhat for getting out there and running because if anybody was following the campaign reports last week, Mr. Najoli and I are both under $5,000 in dollar raise, but we're getting out there and doing it. You need 50 signatures to get on the ballot. So it's within reach for anybody to get on the ballot and you can make a decent campaign, getting out, knocking doors, putting out some signs. I see Mr. Najoli's signs out there in places. So the other candidates that Mr. Najoli and I are running, if you might have seen, they have between 250 and 400,000 dollars. So this is what scares a lot of people from running, that they say, oh, you know, I don't know, I can't get 400,000 dollars. So I'm not going to get my voice out there. But, you know, I think I've certainly heard Mr. Najoli's voice and I congratulate him for getting out there and getting, so that's why I tell you this is because it's a situation where if anybody's out there who's listening on this call with big, well, you know, I think I can do better than the people that have been there screwing things up for years, as Mr. Najoli referred to. You can do it. So I want to encourage people, it's not out of your reach.
Thank you.
Mr. Jolie, would you like to respond?
Oh, yes, that is a great point that he raised. And when you look at your TV, you see all these attack ads that go back and forth and you see all the money that is being spent. It is just so unfortunate. That money can be used to truly help individuals within communities. And I'm thinking perhaps an innovative candidate will decide that instead of spending $200,000, $300,000 on campaign ads and billboards, perhaps they can help individuals within their communities take care of hefty back bills. And that could be an avenue to truly being able to develop a better relationship with so many across the entire county. And I remember the story of a musician who was able to go down to Florida and help pay bills of, for so many people. Even the story of, uh, what's his name, the guy with the studio, Tyler Perry?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, he was able to go to a Walmart and just pay grocery for everybody who was in the store. He does that every couple of months. If our politicians or any leaders who are out there in our communities can do more of this, then we begin to have a community where equity increases. So thank you for that idea, Paul. I, Matt, Matt O'Neil, thank you. That was a great idea. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next question. We have anyone on Facebook? Chat?
I don't see questions on Facebook currently.
There are none on chat.
Actually, I do, I do see, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, was I supposed to raise my hand?
That's okay.
Oh, it's me. I'll take myself off video. Um, I have a, I have a quick question and thank you for your previous comments. I, just recently, I really commend everybody for running for office and taking into their own hands of making a difference. It's just, I always tell everybody to get involved on the local level. And my, my question is really simply, and, you know, what would you boil down your one thing that you think you can contribute most to the community?
Well, in my, in my case, I have a MBA and I did pass CPA exam and was an active CPA for a while. Currently, I do corporate treasury for a publicly traded company. So my skill set is in, in financial areas and I do not feel anybody on the current mission has any experience in how to read a balance sheet, how to balance a budget without raising taxes, is seems to be the only go-to mechanism now is raise taxes. Where the average person can't get out and say, I want a 64% raise, which is what they just asked the taxpayers for. So, you know, my experience is in that, and I think that's what's going to offset me from the current three folks that are down there right now.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Najoli, do you want to answer?
Yes, for me, I have a doctoral degree in organizational leadership and I produced a very comprehensive two, thirty-two page dissertation. So I am equipped to be able to really produce all encompassing type of projects and programs. And I look at the current COVID situation, I think the response has not been comprehensive. And I have already detailed the need for having a pandemic plan. It consists of eight different elements, which would be critical to just producing a very tight response that moves us forward. And really quick, I just mentioned the eight, we need to have production plans for our business authority plans for our leaders. We saw instances where there was on which leaders should make what decisions. We need to have nursing plans for our treatment teams. We need to have data plans for scientific analysts so that they can help all the specialists who are addressing the situation. We need to have education plans for our children who are out of school and mingling plans for individuals as they go into community. We need to have intergovernmental plans for our 52 jurisdictions so that they can know how to work with each other in a very synergistic way to address the situations. And then finally, we need to have change plans so that whenever we have a future pandemic, we know what are the things we need to address in a much more rigorous way to quickly flatten the curve and to ensure that it is not a prolonged pandemic the way this has been. So such a, I think I can contribute in a very immense way to produce such plans. And I have basics of such a plan which I've been working on. I'd like to bring that to the county government so that whenever we have a situation, we can use it even for the opioid epidemic or for any other pandemic that we have to address down the road. So I want to bring that to county government.
Uh, can I, I want to comment on the topic of the Corona count, that there's a site called Worldometers. And Worldometers, you can look at the Corona deaths per million in the United States is number 10. And we're just barely in the top 10. There's two countries that are in Europe that could easily pass us by here with their new outbreak. So the reason why I ask important, most people need to know about Worldometers because anytime you read an article in the newspaper and it says the world or United States leads the world in coronavirus deaths, it's misinformation. So I went on the radio once and was talking about Worldometers. And I was called out as spreading misinformation and then I got a letter to hate mail on my election site. I mailed the Worldometer story, which is the data site, which is always, you know, always up. You can go to Worldometers at any time and send it out and not one person sent back and said, I had no idea about that information or actually that disproves what, you know, the media's been saying. So the point of it is that when the media gets out there and says that, they end up scaring people. And so, yeah, the coronavirus is important and for some people it is deadly. But, you know, we need to know the exact facts we're dealing with instead of, you know, having true information suppressed.
Hello, this is Marika Kocia. I'm reading in the chat about a, a message from Ann's iPad. An issue that I think is important, I wonder, about the community engagement ordinance enforced for county projects. Um, I wonder if we could address that.
Sure, I can read the, should I read the question, moderator?
Yeah.
Okay. The question is, we, Ann will like to know your thoughts on the community engagement ordinance enforced for the county projects.
And maybe, Wanda, you could give a little background on this issue, if you don't mind?
Or Ann, do you want to clarify your question?
Or Ann. This is Ann's question, yeah.
Yes, thanks, Marie.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, they might not have heard about it. Fairly recently, through COFA, they had proposed an ordinance and through the city council, I guess was given, city council members and also the commissioners and MSD copies of a possible ordinance that are proposing for the community to have some say and be involved with different projects within the county, such as the sewer projects with MSD. And it was including involvement, like from the beginning stage all the way through a project and also with even at the end with some type of, when their, when their evaluation of the project. And this has just been recently proposed to the commissioners, the present commissioners and the city council. And I just wanted to know what your thoughts are.
Absolutely. I totally support that, that there should be community involvement and those kind of things. If you look back, if you turn the clock back sixty years when I-75 was being built, it demolished huge chunks of the West End. The people were given, the historical records show that people were given thirty days to evacuate homes that they've lived in for sixty years. That type of thing doesn't happen anymore because part of the difficulties the United States had in the, in the mid-sixties is these folks were displaced from communities they love. And, you know, I see the same thing happen with the MSD situation. So I think it's, you know, certainly things aren't as bad as they were then, but, you know, we need the community involved in these types of things. And I totally support any type of action or legislation that would be in that, you know, focus on that type of engagement.
And this is Marie Kocia again. I'd like to comment that I've been to many of these proposals that the Metropolitan Sewer District puts forward and they really aren't opportunities for community engagement. Many of us call them dog and pony shows because it's a presentation to us, but there's never any way for us to give feedback. And as, as a, as a member of, you know, I live in the county and my county taxes go for these things. And I, I do think that the current system that Metropolitan Sewer District has for putting forth these projects really does not encourage citizens to participate.
Doctor, do you want to respond?
Yes, I would say that I have a number of friends who sit on the leadership teams of some of our community councils, one on the west side of town and another one in the downtown area. And they are so frustrated that they come up with ideas and they have meetings every month and they take their recommendations forward. This is at the city level, to the city council. But whenever it comes to decision-making, their thoughts are put aside and the city just pushes through their own agenda. And in fact, one individual just told me the other day that he's not running for reelection because it's just frustrating to have all of these meetings every month and their ideas are not acted on. So definitely, we need to have a process whereby when projects are developed at the county level, the city level, the input from the community is truly acted on. Those public hearings are critical. County commissioners need to have meetings within the communities so that people can have access to whatever is discussed. And I think another element of the community engagement ordinance is that any organization that receives or is granted a contract for a project has to have a mentoring program for youth in the community. So I think that's the same ordinance. I, I would say that there needs to be just some equity that allows individuals broadly across the county or youth across the county to be mentored by these organizations and companies that have projects within our community so that we have a transfer of tacit knowledge within our communities and people can continue to have trust that we are caring about the future of our youth by including them in community projects.
Okay, thank you. Just as a point of clarification, because we only have two candidates now, I've extended your response times from one minute to two minutes.
Okay.
Notice that you're going a little bit long. It's because we've allowed you extra time to speak. Are there any other questions?
Comment on the community engagement. One thing that's of interest is the meetings and where the commissioners' meetings are held, that I think these things should move all the heck over the county so that, you know, you have Price Hill Night, you have Pleasant Ridge Night, you know, Springdale Night, to where you get those people out of their, you know, downtown location. That, that'll help the government be a little bit more. And I would say the same for city council as well, you know. Although, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot easier if they have city council at, you know, place in your neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Najoli, do you have a response or you want to expound?
Not quite. I'd say, yeah, I agree with that. We need to bring the wisdom of the people into our county government. Many times, people don't get involved because they see government as the decisions of an elite few. And that's why we have very few engagement and it results down the road in very low voter participation because they don't feel invested in their government. So if we can truly broaden the inclusion of people within their communities in their own government and they feel like government is of the people, by the people, for the people, we truly will be getting to a place whereby we have a better society.
Okay, thank you. Allison, do you have any questions in your area?
I, this is Pat Youngwood.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to count on this community thing. I was very happy to hear about the things that both of you said that would distinguish you as a commissioner. Obviously, we need organizational skills and financial skills. But what I would like to know, so often in our community, there are really great ideas and the commissioners and the city council are very far apart. I would like to know from the two of you, what would you do to make sure that you can work with the city? And things like the sewer problem, our affordable housing, all of those things where, especially where developers come into the city and the, the city gives thousands of property for a dollar when we don't have enough housing in our community. I, I'd like to hear from the two of you, how would you work to make this better?
Okay, Dr. Najoli, you want to go first?
Oh, yes. Many of you might remember in the 1970s, what happened in Indianapolis, where there was a merger of city and county governments. I think the mayor of Indianapolis at that time was the late Dick Luger. And he wrote about this whole process whereby he was able to harness all of the leadership within the city and also the county so that they were able to unite the city and county government. I think we really need to look at that. One of the ways in which that can come about is through a referendum where 60% of the voters actually vote for a unification of city and county government. I am not opposed to the idea of really petitioning for signatures to actually get that done. I've already petitioned for signatures in a major way to get on the ballot and I think I know how to get something like that done. I, I, I feel like if I am elected, we truly need to look at that idea and work to ensure that we can make it happen. Along with that, the city of Louisville, along with their county, why united? Nashville, along with Davidson County, why united? We need to bring more unity in city and county government.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, yes, while Dr. Najoli was speaking, I was gonna, I was gonna toss out Louisville, so, you know, and yes, as well, Nashville. Unfortunately, I feel that Halem County is further away from that than ever, especially given that the city has about 300,000, the county has about 520,000. I can tell you that the people out in the county absolutely want no part of that. But I also think that the people in the city may not either because if, if the city, which, you know, is heavily democratic, then were to merge with the county, it would be, you know, it may be edged too much toward the county, even though the politics of it would be probably five to four Democrat. But, you know, I just think that the Cincinnati being an older city than any of those cities, maybe not Louisville, but, you know, the, unfortunately, it's a great idea, but I, I just think the, the, the heads are too hardened on that particular topic that I would not want to invest time. But what I would like to do is to have the county departments, which are, say, different fire departments. For example, Montgomery Sims has one and, you know, Deer Park will have one and St. Bernard Elmore will have a fire department. To me, that type of duplication among communities out in the suburbs, you know, is absolutely insane. It would be like having the city of Cincinnati instead of having, you know, you know, one police department having a separate, each district being its own police department, even within the city. So, you know, I think that shared services is the way to go. And I think, you know, roads, you know, you have a one neighborhood, Norwich comes to mind, where a street will be paved on one side. Cypress Avenue, but the other side isn't paved because that's Cincinnati. That, that kind of stuff is nonsense. And so I think, you know, we need to have, uh, on areas like how we pave roads, uh, salting, uh, fire department response time. Those are areas where I think definitely, you know, I would be willing to work together on that. And then, you know, as far as sweetheart deals and developers getting properties for a dollar, absolutely. You know, if you're connected here, you can get a, you can get a big deal and whereas everybody else has to pay full price, terrible.
Mr. O'Neil, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you agreed to sharing. But my question is, so often when a project comes up where it does involve the city and it does involve the commissioners. They are so far apart. I, I want to know, what would you do to, um, to bring the two together? Because, for example, CUFa worked on this thing where, um, trying to hold the, the city council accountable for, um, the houses and that someone was talking about having, um, a house empty in their neighborhood for two years. Well, I, we know that the city is always, um, building people that have these houses that own the houses before rather than going to whoever took over the property. I would like to know, how do you think that the commissioners could come in? Because it's not just the city prod, it's not just a city problem. It's
Yeah, I was the one actually was referring to my specific street and actually the houses had been, actually both of them were ten years. They were owner occupied for a long time, but the owners moved out. So my answer to that, that's, you know, I would like that to apply to the whole county, not just the city to where, you know, we need
How, how would you make that happen?
I think with the, is I'm a commissioner, I would like there to, I would like to join with another commissioner and have a vacancy tax. Uh, to get that property turned into viable housing again. And I think, you know, earlier, one of the other candidates was talking about, um, you know, repair funds in, in Price Hill. So taking houses that are offline and turning them into productive houses is part of the solving the, the housing situation. And I think my personality is such that, you know, I'm not a career politician or is Dr. Najoli. And I think that puts us in a better position to, hey, we don't have, you know, a prior experience with either the city or the county, so we could be more impartial. And, you know, bringing a good personality in and being impartial is part of the situation. And I think that, that I could make a difference, whereas I think many of the other people have either worked for the city or worked for the county and they're career politicians and therefore, you know, they've already got their foot on the scale for one group or the other.
Hey, thank you. Dr. Najoli, do you want to respond to Pat's question?
Oh, yes, definitely. I want to bring non-traditional voices into government. We have lived in Cincinnati and Hamilton County all of our lives, for many of us on this of listening. And you have seen what happens when we have just the same, same voices and continued systemic problems. And what I call wicked problems. These problems just don't go away because it is the same thinking that just keeps on, uh, controlling the process of decision making. One of the things that I truly want to do is to lean on the wisdom of our elders in this city. And elders who have been engaged in community issues, though not necessarily part of government. I grew up in a context where there was a recognized leader, but then there was a council of elders. If elected, I would like to have a council of elders and this will be people who have tremendous wisdom based on life experience, based on engagement in community and have them be like an advisory team. The decision making that is made is not vested in just myself as a county commissioner. But it is a rich decision making based on the wisdom of the elders who support my thinking.
Is there any more, any more questions out there, Allison?
I have a question.
All right.
Yeah.
What is the clearance, the clean choice energy?
I mean, I've gotten that in the mail. It's, I, I think that the whole thing is you can, if you purchase energy from there, then they provide all your, your energy from, you know, clean sources, wind and solar and such compared to, you know, other energy suppliers you may choose that solicit your, your business.
Dr. Najoli, you want to answer?
That means I will be paying for two, Duke and, and this one?
No, you'd still pay your bill to Duke, uh, because Duke is still the, the biller of record, but Duke would source your power from somewhere else. So you'd still have one bill, but your source wouldn't be Duke anymore. You probably pay more because it's solar and wind and so on green base, but you know, if that's, if that's your commitment to the environment is greater than it is to your pocketbook, then, you know, that's your, your free choice to make either way.
Dr. Najoli, you want to respond?
I'm not super familiar with the clean choice. I would look into it. But I would say that we definitely need, uh, more justice for individuals who perhaps might not have the ability to do their own research on some of these offerings that come in the mail or people just walking up and knocking on someone's door. There needs to be some kind of, uh, perhaps, uh, analysis or regulation that enables them to truly be able to, uh, have already been vetted so that whatever they are offering is, doesn't end up negatively impacting those who might consider signing up for something which they have very few or very little, you know, knowledge about.
Willie, you want to take over?
Yes, Allison, do we have any more participants?
I don't see any questions on Facebook, um.
Okay.
I don't see any ready hands. I actually, oh, go ahead.
I have a, a comment about something is, is we were talking about community engagement earlier.
Well, I actually have a question for this candidate.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I would like to know what your plan is to deal with the coronavirus pandemic.
You want to, you want to go first?
You want?
Mr. O'Neil, you can go first, yes.
Okay, uh, well, you know, I'm against the shutdowns. I think the, the damage from shutdowns is untouchable. So, you know, I, I'm not in favor of that. I'm very concerned that students who go to the Cincinnati Public Schools are falling way behind suburban and Catholic schools in the county in, in that area. So, you know, that's certainly something I'm gonna, I think people need to know the numbers, but I think often the numbers are out of context. Uh, and when somebody gives, when somebody on CNN has the death count of two hundred twenty-two thousand, every time you tune in and you see the death count. To me, it's a scare tactic. Uh, you know, maybe the deaths have been zero one day, but you look up there and still see two hundred twenty-two thousand. So I think that, you know, I will be not spreading fear when I go about things. And I think people need information to make decisions that are right for them without being scared to death. Vaccine will come soon enough, but now we have people saying, well, if it comes under the Trump administration, must be poison. I'm not going to use it. I'll wait till hopefully Joe Biden wins and then I'll take it. And so, you know, half the people won't take a vaccine anyway. So, you know, that's going to take the situation where we need to figure out who's going to take the vaccine first. Get it to them and make sure that they come out all right. And then we can convince people who don't want to take the vaccine, hey, you know, we've had hundred thousand, a million people, whatever, take the vaccine, you know, they're not getting sick. And so therefore, you can, you know, the vaccine is safe for those that are doubters on the vaccine.
Okay, Dr. Najoli, do you want to respond?
I would say we need to continue to push towards our senators passing the Heroes Act. So that people can receive that second level of help that's going to truly address their pocketbook needs. And thankful that the CARES Act was helpful to so many businesses and the PPP program. And so many small businesses have utilized that. Uh, but there needs to be more to address the real cost to people in their everyday lives. Not just in their workplace needs, you know. So for me also additionally, as a commissioner, if I were in the seat right now, I would be having my meetings to update the community within different communities all across the county and not just at the county office. I think once, when we have press conferences only at the county office, people don't really feel uh, that the actual community issues are being addressed. I think those meetings need, need to go out into different, uh, communities.
I have, I have a question for both of you. If
Sue has got a couple, Sue is raising her hand here.
Yeah, there are some comments in the chat, um, basically responding that they like Dr. Najoli's idea about the elders. And then there was a concern for Mr. O'Neil that even though fracking seems like cheap energy, that he fails to calculate the external costs, that is the cost to the environment and the cost to human health. Also, the waste from fracking is extremely problematic and is causing cancer and many horrendous health problems in the communities surrounded by the wells. And, uh, they do appreciate that both candidates are participating and they speak. Uh, some of the other candidates don't, they speak and they don't listen. So we appreciate that both of the candidates are listening to the concerns of the community members.
So do we just want to take that question on fracking?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, you, well, Mr. O'Neil, um, do you want to be the first one to answer the question about fracking?
Well, yeah, I'm the one who brought up fracking and, and absolutely, you're, whoever wrote those comments that there is environmental cost to fracking and i- in context of the, uh, cheap energy. If the, if the goal is to keep energies cheap as possible, then you can outlook it. If the idea is to keep energy as green as possible, then we're going to pay a lot more money. So I think my answer is in part, not as much of an endorsement of fracking as it is to give out the answer where the question is, how can I get the cost of energy down? It would be to keep fracking. So that's not, you know, don't take that as an endorsement for fracking, but, you know, natural gas, I certainly will endorse natural gas. And moving away from that, I think would be a horrible mistake, but I don't cover fracking with that.
Hey, thank you. What about Dr. Najoli? Do you want to respond?
I'd like to respond on the idea of that the other, you know, they speak but don't listen. I think the way to hit the ground running as a new leader is to go on a listening tour. Uh, many times when individuals are elected into public office, uh, they come in with their own ideas and not necessarily consider how those ideas can be applied to those constants within the community. For me, I would say my very first few days in office will be involved in going on a listening tour and actually having conversations, taking notes and listening to, uh, all of the challenges that are going on within our community. So that we can, uh, move forward together rather than, uh, just come in with my own platform and not listen to what the people would like to be addressed.
Hey, thank you. Willie, you want to take over?
Yes, the time is eight twenty-six. We're getting ready to adjourn. But before we do, once again, CUFa would like to thank the candidates, our members and the audience for participating in this robust discussion tonight. You can join CUFa, which we need a lot of new members, find out more about the issues. And take action at www.cufacinci.org. CUFa senses our one word. Or by calling us at eight five three three nine four seven. And if you have not already voted, make your plan today. Early voting is open at the Board of Elections at forty-seven hundred Smith Road until November second. You can still request an absentee ballot, ballot until noon on October thirty-first. If you prefer to vote by mail, in-person voting or in-person voting on November third, it is your, you vote at your normal polling place. Find out more about this voting option at If you have absentee ballots, ballots, it must be postmarked by November the second or delivered to the Board of Elections before seven on November the third, by seven P M. I hope I didn't confuse anyone.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to participate and, uh, your listeners can, who haven't voted yet, can vote for both myself and Dr. Najoli because we're not running for the same seat. So, you know, we both would appreciate your vote.
Definitely. And I say thank you too. Thank you for hosting, for your fantastic work. And I really will lean on your wisdom. If elected, you would be one of the very first organizations that I would want to be engaged in crafting a new path forward for our county.
Thank you. Clark, do you want to say anything?
Well, just thank you all for participating. Good evening and go vote. And, uh, let's all join and work on some of these very important projects that, uh, tonight. So thanks everyone again.
Thank you all.
All right.
Good night.
Okay.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.